All right, so good evening. I called to order the planning boards on Monday, the 28th. We're starting at six thirty. Had a little delay with the locked door downstairs. Thank you everyone for being waiting until we got that figured out. Today, first on our agenda is we're going to welcome a new planning board. Very excited about this. Matthew, welcome.
Yeah, thank you very much. I'm the new planning director for the town of Dexbury. My name is Matthew Heinz. I guess this is supposed to be now. I previously had worked in Pembroke as planning board assistant for about 70 years. And then I was briefly the town planner at Hanover until they had their budget crisis since that was when people got laid off unfortunately. But both those towns were great experiences. And for some reason, I kind of just kind of by random chance, I guess, I keep getting these jobs here. And this is kind of this part of the South Shore. I live in Marshfield, actually, so it's quite convenient. It's just kind of worked out that way. I have a background in both architecture and planning and urban planning. And I guess that's pretty much all I can think of to say.
Okay, thank you. And you think you've had a chance to be on the planning board, right?
Yeah, I guess, except Jennifer Turco and Wayne Dennison. I guess I'm about to be Wayne, we're both there.
What is on? Okay, great, thank you. All right, next up, we have a series of administrative items. If I'd like to go ahead and move them individually. The first one, let's talk about the park side subdivision. We need to set the performance bond for Red Hawk Lane. Do you want to talk about that?
Oh, I think Pat has submitted the process. We'll go with that.
Okay.
Ready to go.
Okay. I don't see Pat here. Hey, Wayne. So any questions from the board about the performance bond? Information was in our packet that we were sending you. Okay, do I have a motion to do I have a motion to approve this?
So moved.
Hold on a second. Well, yeah.
Just before we take a vote, we need to find the board now. We have to remove Cindy. Go back.
Oh, yes, that's probably a good idea. Yes, that's a great, thank you very much. While I'm looking up the performance bond map, we'll have somebody from the board here go ahead and read the meeting notice since we are remote tonight. Would I volunteer?
I will be happy to.
I see.
Sure. Pursuant to chapter two of the Acts of 2023 and as amended as of March 28, 2025. This meeting will be conducted in person and as a courtesy via remote meetings in accordance with applicable law. Please note that while the option for remote attendance and our participation is being provided as a courtesy to the public and board members, the meeting hearing will be not will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless required by law. Members of the public who wish to watch the meeting may do so by using the Zoom login information in the agenda. Viewers can visit the website specified at the localseam.media/dexbury for information about Dexbury programming, including streaming and watching replays on Dexbury YouTube.
Thank you very much, Steve. I'm still unable to pull up the amount. You asked me about Emily, but I didn't choose. Two hundred thousand, two hundred and twenty. Two hundred thousand, two hundred, two, two hundred and twenty thousand. No.
Two hundred thousand, two hundred and what's that?
Two hundred thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars for the performance bond. Okay. So let's do, do we have, amend that to the joint thing?
I, yes, I would like to amend, but I moved. So I would like to, I'll make the motion then to set the performance bond for the Red Hawk Lane subdivision at $200,220.
Wait a second. One second, thank you. Any discussion amongst the board?
Well, just raise the point of discussion from the air it out is with our recent experience with another performance bond that lingered, let's say. Do we have an expectation on timeline here in terms of when the work is completed and the bond expires and all of that?
So we plan to do the final pay. When it's, it's both the work is final paid and the street trades.
Yeah.
And we generally do that once the lots are completed.
Yeah.
That way the construction vehicles don't destroy the final binding. So maybe two years?
Okay, so in that case, my question would be, since this is an estimate based on today dollars and the period of the performance bond that's going to be of interest at the end, is it appropriate to include some sort of, not a contingency, but you know what I mean? An escalator or?
A trap.
So there is a contingency number in Catherine's number.
It isn't. Yeah, it's got a 20%. I said it, but I didn't pick that up. Okay, thank you for pointing that out.
All right. Now I'm finally. All right. So Wayne, do you have any comments? I think that is no. All right, we'll go ahead and do a roll call. Since there's no other discussion, we'll do a roll call vote on this, please, starting with Matt.
Matthew Ray, I. Steve Kent, I.
Kristen Rappi.
I. Your eye.
Lawrence, your eye.
Wayne.
We can't hear you. Volume up.
He's not.
There's anybody else over there.
He's unmuted.
Wayne, can you add anything to the chat? Vote that way, maybe? Well, do we?
Hello. Well, we've got to form them out, so.
Oh, he's connecting with audio.
Okay.
Hey, folks, took me forever to get in, but I'm here.
Okay, welcome. All right, so we've just done a roll call vote on the performance bond for Parkside Subdivision. Would you care to join in? Is that no?
No, thank you.
Okay, so we'll vote without you. Okay. All right, so the motion approves, but it carries with the floor. Thank you. All right, next up is minutes from June 23rd. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
So.
Second, any discussion? There was one thing, Emily had a question on the second page. It was a word and I, I think. The tight tank, is that what that, that word was? It was a tight tank or do you remember that? And the, the property right beside Barney's gas station. So the tight tank, is that what it's called?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, perfect, that's it, I'm good. And any comments? Nope, all right, we'll call for a roll call vote to approve the minutes for June 23rd, starting with Matt.
Matthew Ray, I. Steve Kent, I.
Kristen Rappi.
Governor Ryan.
Lawrence, your eye.
Wayne Dennison, I.
All right, the motion passes. Next up is deciding who among us will be a delegate to the Metropolitan Area Planning Council. I think usually this is the planning director that hears it for us.
I think that would be logical. I think actually tonight, the, sorry, the select board is in the process unless they, something unexpected happens of voting to approve me as the delegate or I think the member of the, or calling it planning council. It certainly makes sense that I'd be kind of a similar position for MFTC. Yeah, I think that just seems logical.
I think it's a great idea because I am currently the delegate. And it would, you know, I think you should succeed me and do a wonderful job.
Second here? All right, thank you, Matthew. Any questions? Do we need to make a motion to approve the minutes? Okay, so I'll undertake a motion to approve Matthew Heinz is our Metropolitan Area Planning Council delegate.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? You've already heard Wayne on that. Okay, we'll start with Matt and call for a roll call vote, starting with that.
Matthew Ray, I. Steve Kent, I.
Kristen Rappi.
Lawrence, your eye.
Wayne Dennison, I.
Congratulations, Wayne.
All right, next step is can be administrative. Does anybody have anything that they would like to share? I did, we do have, we will talk about planning board goals at the end of the meeting. One thing I wanted to point out is that the coastal residency task force has approached us. They've been working with the Woods Hole Group to look at some zoning bylaws and zoning bylaws and some regulation amendments that would add some additional language about wetlands protection to our bylaw. And so we would like to consider having, we might have them come and talk to us about that. We did vote in 2021 and I think there've been a couple more changes Woods Hole would suggest. So just want to keep your heads up. For next meeting, okay. Anybody else have anything they want to share? Good? Okay, all right, moving on. So we will go to agenda item number three, which is A and R 2025 02 for 286 North Street. Do we have anybody from there who'd like to talk?
Yes. Evening, I'm Brett Assol, Merrill Associates. I represent the owner applicant for 286 North, 26 North Street. For a pretty straightforward form A plan. Creating a parcel in front, a lot in front and a parcel A to the rear.
And what's the intention of splitting?
Just for future planning purposes.
So how, since it's what it's up for, we're planning to do a lot in a parcel. Is that typical? I thought it was, because if you have a parcel, isn't that usually a smaller piece of?
I don't say it's small, it could just be another parcel. Usually a parcel recommends that it's, you know, in and of itself, it's not a buildable lot. Usually it's an outlaw or something like that. This one does have a lot, the area required for the district, but you know, typically when someone buys a lot, it's, it's a buildable lot than opposed to a parcel.
Parcel, right.
So we just call it parcel for this, for this exercise.
And I might have missed this, is there an easy time to get to that parcel?
There is, currently there is not, no.
So this is a really big chunk of land. We've done, we recently, we, we had a situation where somebody wanted the pregnant heart their lot, so they have a lot and a parcel. The parcel is very skinny and it was like four of this room. Whereas this is a really big piece of land, so I'm curious, how would somebody get to that?
Well, like I said, it's for future purposes, so we get to figure out where an access would be, access to get access to the lot.
Okay.
This will merely, this will merely just separate the lot from the current owner and the front house in the, you know, the possible development to the back. And then getting to what will happen in future time.
Matthew, do you have any questions for, on that?
Not really, I mean, I see there's the note parcel A is not a buildable lot for the town of Dexbury zoning bylaw. So I guess you're acknowledging that at the moment, for this plan at least, it would, it would not become available at present. Like, like if this is approved.
It could become available, but at present zoning, no, it wouldn't. You, you, we couldn't pull building permits for the lot tomorrow.
I mean, it's, it's, it's not just the zoning courses, more really the lack of frontage, the access.
Right.
And so I guess hypothetically, why not, I can't expect it, but I guess hypothetically, maybe it'll, this could be joined to some other lot someday in the future or maybe something else could happen that could change the situation.
Right.
Okay. Sport have any questions?
You're going to bifurcate the ownership between the two? Or are you going to bifurcate the ownership once you reported so parcel A, the newly created, unbuildable lot will be in a separate ownership?
Probably, yes, yeah.
Anybody else, Wayne, do you have any questions? Okay, so technically, we don't actually need our approval, but we appreciate the fact you came before us and had the conversation. And we will have this in our minutes and then you guys are our questions that come up later. So since we don't need to approve it, we don't need to vote on it, correct? Or do we? You can go ahead and.
I believe we need to vote to endorse it. So I mean, it's legally, you know, the term is A and R, so you know, approval not required, but it's a bit of a misnomer because the board still has to vote to endorse it, which, and so the board, you know, the board in that sense, my understanding is the board has the option whether or not to endorse it, but from a legal point of view, if, if an A and R kind of meets all the requirements, then the board is more or less legally obligated to endorse it.
As near as we can tell, we are. Okay, all right, so undertake the motion to endorse A and R 2025 02 at 286 North Street.
So moved. One second.
Any, any questions in the board? Or discussion? Okay, go ahead and call for a roll call, starting with Matt.
Matthew Ray, I. Steve Kent, I.
Kristen Rappi.
Governor Ryan.
Lawrence, your eye.
Wayne Dennison, nay.
Thank you. The motion to endorse this carries, thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And so I mean, I don't know how you feel, but it seems like you could just go ahead and sign it now unless the normal business difference for it.
Usually sign it at the end.
Yeah, we, we can back pick up tomorrow something, that's fine. Great, thank you.
Okay, next up on the agenda is the public hearing for 51 Wadsworth Road subdivision. So what we'll do is we vote to open the hearing, read the public hearing notice. We have a question.
I, I will make a motion to open the meeting and to open the hearing for the 51 Wadsworth Road subdivision.
And if you have a second.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Favor, the roll call votes.
Matthew Ray, I. Steve Kent, I.
Kristen Rappi.
Governor Ryan.
Lawrence, your eye.
Wayne Dennison, I.
Passes, we'll open the subdivision. Now we need to bring the public to go to. A question, we see if we have it to hack it out, please. Let's suspect we have it here.
The legal ads, sorry. I have a hard copy. Thanks. That's definitely a circle.
Um.
I'll be back again. Everything starts with personally. Pursuant to the subdivision control law, MGL, chapter 41, section A1T and following, the Dexbury Planning Board will hold a public hearing in a large classroom, second floor of the Dexbury Senior Center, 10 Main Flora Street, Dexbury, Mass. 02332, and via Zoom on Monday, July 28, 2025 at 6:00 PM. Have requested the applicant E J G Wadsworth LLC for review of a definitive subdivision plan entitled, quote, definitive subdivision plan 51 Wadsworth Road, Dexbury, Massachusetts 02332, and quote, prepared by Homestead Consulting Engineers in June 5, 2025, including five sheets. This proposal is for two lot residential subdivision, the 51 Wadsworth Road. Pascal number 096-667-889. Property located within the residential compatibility RC zoning district and partially in the wetlands protection overlay district that the P O D. Any person interested or wishing to comment on the proposal should appear at the time and place noted above. A copy of the application, plans and other supporting documents will be available on the planning board's webpage or by contacting the management office. So we did chapter two of the Acts of 2023, as amended as of March 28, 2025. This meeting will be conducted in person and as a courtesy by remote meetings in accordance with applicable law. Please note, while not in remote attendance and our participation is being provided as a courtesy to public and board members. It is clearing all that is intended to turn into technological problems, interrupting the virtual broadcast unless required by law. Members of the public who wish to watch the meeting may do so by using the Zoom login information below. Viewers can visit at https slash the localseam.media slash Dexbury slash for information about Dexbury programming, including streaming and watching replays on Dexbury YouTube.
Thank you very much, Steve. Okay, so welcome, everybody. I guess most of the crowd is here for this. So what we'll do is we will have the contention here, Paul Ford, explain to us the subdivision plan. Then the board will ask questions, then we'll invite members of the public to make comments or ask questions. And when you do that, you'll write a question to me, I'll tell, I'll go back to the applicant. Then also ask your planning director for any inputs and then we'll do any voting that we need. We decided to do that tonight. So with that, Mr. Parker, would you be ready to take the floor?
Thank you, Madam Chair, for the record, I'm Paul Grogi with Seacoast Engineering, Dexbury. And I've been teaming up on this project with Josh Green from Homestead Consulting Engineers. We have attorney, Rob Dambrosia from town to represent the project and our contact, the owner of the property of 51 Wadsworth Road, who also lives upon Marshall Street itself. So we're here this evening to basically introduce a project for the 4.51 acres of land on, at 51 Wadsworth. We started this project, I'm going to say last fall, when Mr. Pontiff came to us and asked a couple of questions about his recent purchase of the property and the fact that looking at the lay of the land, could this property be subdivided and create a two lot subdivision out of it? Does it meet the requirements for the town for 2024, 2025? And obviously, in today's day and age, to meet the zoning requirements, each lot needs to be, that 200 feet of frontage, minimum 40,000 square feet of contiguous upland, meet all the planning board requirements for a local street, which is basically three lots or less, will be waived with however many items would be needed to be waived. And equally as important is that we have to comply with Title V, both the state Title V requirements and the local Dexbury planning board, border health requirements with more stringent requirements than normal Title V as itself. And also conservation viewpoint, section 141's, section 30 of the general laws, we have to comply with the Wetlands Protection Act and the local regulations for the Dexbury Conservation Commission. So over a matter of three or four months between last fall and January of this year, we did an existing condition plan, we reviewed everything. Josh Green did all the technical work to determine the fact that, based on our wetlands scientist Brad Holmes from ECR Incorporated in Plymouth, he did the wetlands delineation, we determined and found out that we could come up with two lots, each with at least 40,000 square feet of contiguous upland and meet the normal 200 feet of frontage that would be required for this, again, under the local street guidelines of Dexbury planning board rules and regulations. With that, we came to the planning board in January of this year. It was January 6th, we had a public hearing informally with the conceptual plan at that point in time. Discuss the project with the planning board and a couple of questions came up from at least two members of the board relative to the proposed cul-de-sac that we had on the plan to develop the additional frontage that we needed for the two lots. Presently, 51 Wadsworth Road has 325, 326 feet of frontage. Obviously, with two lots, we need 400. So with what we proposed back in January, a couple of questions came up for the board to go back to town council for her opinion, and this is what we've got back in February of this year. Fast forward to the last couple of weeks, when we submitted the plans last month, the development review team for the town of Dexbury, including public safety, public works, building zoning, et cetera. We had a meeting and discussed the issue. The question on town council's opinion came up again. And I think between a week ago, last Thursday, Matt, and today, we did receive the opinion from town council a little bit clearer than what we had had before. Attorney Dan Brozio will address that in a few minutes. So we applied to the town back last month, everybody received their notices in the mail, obviously. So in that respect, we're here to discuss the proposal to create the additional frontage at 51 Wadsworth and basically subdivide the 4.51 acres into two buildable lots. Okay. Just to get off of technical issues, the design issues and the fact of where we are with the planning view at this point in time.
As Paul said, Josh Green, Homestead Consulting Engineers. Emily, could you just go to the next page for me, please? Just for the benefit of the board and public, just quickly run down the design for the cul-de-sac here as far as the turnaround, we still do have the peer review letter from Pat Brennan that we're working to address, but really want to get your comments to kind of address at the same time. The hammerhead turnaround will come off of Wadsworth Road, generally sloping from Wadsworth down to the end. Flatten the area out at the end, just to allow for the actual turnaround of the fire truck for the analysis. Catch basically going to a manhole that then goes to a manifold to the subsurface system down below. Generally grading to the back of the cul-de-sac where retaining wall is. I'm not going to go through every comment that Pat submitted, but just, it did seem to warrant going over. Pat did make a comment about the retaining wall, we're actually going to be pulling that into the right of way upon his comment. Just to avoid some issues as far as easement related to the right of way. System itself will handle all the storms up to the 100 with a slight larger discharge than existing conditions, which is permissible by the stormwater handbook due to the size of the down gradient watershed area. I think with that, it's really just the general grading coming around it. We tried to limit as much as possible to kind of limit the tree clearing, but due to the slopes, we did have the right side and then the drainage that kind of went on or beyond the cul-de-sac turnaround itself.
That was turned over to you.
Sure, yeah, thanks, Josh.
Hi, folks, for the record, Rob Dambrosio, attorney at law, I'm a Dexbury resident, law offices in Plymouth. So I'm here primarily to address the comments that town council made, I think, most recently this morning, 8:30 AM. It looks like she gave some insight. Did you guys have a chance to look at what she said before I speak to it? Okay, I know sometimes you don't like to take stuff last minute and I wouldn't blame you. So I'm going to respectfully kind of disagree with Amy Questle's conclusion, I like Amy. But I think that she's conflating in this instance, access with pavement. Okay, so it's, it's incontrovertible that these two lots have access to this right of way. They border it, and again, by definition, when you create a subdivision, the lots on a subdivision plan all have easement rights over the subdivision way. That's fundamental, that's what a subdivision is for. So you can't very well say that these lots don't have access to this cul-de-sac unless it's paved in its entirety. I'll do you one better there. I think it would be very unusual to have any right of way, public or private, paved throughout its entire area. I mean, you could take this example, Wadsworth Road is a 40 foot wide public right of way. I'm going to wager the paving is about 25 feet, which is typical for obvious reasons. You know, take an example where if this subdivision required sidewalks, you'd have sidewalks around the edge of the right of way. That wouldn't defeat access. I don't think anyone would say you don't have access to this right of way because the pavement doesn't run right up to the edge of it. Again, I think really though, practically speaking, do you want to see a large area of denuded trees when it's really not necessary? I think that's kind of the practical way to view this. But again, if you want to go back to just the technical argument here, and I don't know who's driving here, but if you want to pull up, but if I may ask you, section 7.3.2 of the subdivision rules and regs, I think that's maybe the most crystal clear way to explain why I don't think it's customary, logical or intended by the bylaw to pave entire right of way.
Sir, sorry. Kristen, is it okay if I open for a moment here?
Uh, sure.
Sorry. I, I think maybe what, I mean, it's up to the board members, but I think maybe what Amy was saying is, is perhaps just that the, the, not that the entire right of way would need to be paved, but just that the portions of it that are providing, basically the portions of the cul-de-sac road that are providing access to the two lots would have to be paved up to, right up, you know, to the edge because after all, the access is going to be through the cul-de-sac anyway. If you look at the last part of Amy's email, I mean, I guess there's certainly some ambiguity there, it's up to the board to make that decision, but I just put that out there as a possibility.
Sure, yeah. No, no, point taken. So again, you don't need to pull it up, but I can just speak to it. You know, 7.3.2, section 7.3.2 of the subdivision rules and regs says, you know, the minimum right of way layout is 50 feet. That's in the case even of these local streets that serve three lots or less. And it says right on there, the minimum width of the travelway is 400. And it says right on there, the minimum width of the travelway is 14 feet. So again, if they had intended the width of the paved area to be the width of the right of way, the table wouldn't operate that way. Again, if Amy's contention, which I guess you could interpret it that way, is that you don't have access over the right of way unless you're paved, at least in some portion to the edge of the right of way. Can we go back to the other plan that shows the Hammerhead? You know, I mean, again, that could be addressed two ways. I don't agree with it, but you could, we could bring the paving, certainly expand another 14 feet on this side, another couple of feet on this side to make it align with the edge. I think in reality, it's probably gonna end up looking like that if this plan gets endorsed and it gets developed that way. You know, the driveways are gonna come off this spur, so you're probably going to have, you know, driveways that actually have a finished area within the cul-de-sac. So I'm happy to take questions, but I wanted to touch that on that first, and then I have a kind of follow-up point, if I could just reserve a minute for that.
I don't think I'm really following up what you're trying to, what you're trying to ask us. Because we've got this, we've got a cul-de-sac, we've got one plan with the cul-de-sac, we've got this other one with the Hammerhead. And so what is it that you're asking of us?
Sure, so those are the same plan. One is showing the layout lot lines, which is what, you know, subdivision control is for, and then this is showing the access drive grading and drainage. So we're asking you to endorse this subdivision plan, which has five plan sheets, I think. Again, your councils, your outside councils inquiry was, or assertion was that that without more paving than this, she doesn't think these lots have access as defined under the subdivision rules and regs. I'm responding to that concern, asserting that they certainly have access, you know, throughout this, you know, by virtue of the fact they have bought it, and that they will have easements over the entire cul-de-sac, whether it's paved or not, you know, they certainly have access.
It does, if you don't mind, let me ask you a follow-up question. Have you actually measured the frontage of the Wadsworth Road and onto the Hammerhead? And you were just saying, follow that up to the dividing line of those two lots, what, how much footage front and rear there being?
How much will each lot have with this design?
Yes, without the cul-de-sac, just the Hammerhead.
Or if we just were to come up here? I don't know if you can estimate that, Josh, on the fly.
Yeah, it wouldn't be a company, I can get it, but I wouldn't be a company.
Yeah, I'd be making a guess. Math's not my strong suit.
I'm wondering if that would if that would meet the point that the council was gonna hit, that that part of the portion would be paved.
At the point where Amy was making is Rob, to discussion.
Sure.
Amy was looking not for the whole cul-de-sac to be paved, but for the access point, right, where the driveway meets the Hammerhead.
Right.
The pavement to be connected.
Yeah.
And I think that's, that, you know, imagine, unless you feel free to overstate, but I think that was the last line I heard. A whole cul-de-sac doesn't need to be a continuous paved area. But Hammerhead should at least, you know, the pavement should come and touch the access point on the boundary line.
So, so, yeah, and that's fair. I mean, I will say, I think it's not uncommon to see a layout where the paved area doesn't touch the lot lines. I mean, I think that green wave plan was recently approved next to the church. You know, the driveways may encroach onto the right of way and meet up with the paved portion of the right of way, but the paved portion of the right of way itself doesn't go out to meet the lot lines. Does that make sense? So again, I think it's quite common to have a layout such as this where your paved kind of driving lanes within the right of way don't touch the lot lines of the adjacent homes, home lots. But let me, while we're talking about this, again, let me just offer one other item for the board to contemplate. So we have 300 and what'd you say, 25 feet without the cul-de-sac? And this puts us well over the 400 here. As an alternative, and again, it might be more in keeping with the neighborhood, we've got two acre lots. You know, obviously, all the lots on Wadsworth Road, all the nearby lots come right off of Wadsworth. We could, if the board were to endorse this subdivision plan, you know, we met peer review criteria and so forth, we could never develop this infrastructure and just take two driveways off of Wadsworth. I mean, that would be, I think, more in keeping with the character of the neighborhood, require a lot less tree clearing. We'd have the frontage, because that's created once the plan's endorsed and recorded. But again, that's just an alternative. If that was something that pleased the board and maybe the abutters, that's an option that we'd be happy to explore. Again, I think it'd be less disruptive, certainly less tree clearing, and kind of more visually in keeping with the with the neighborhood. So just throwing that out there while we're talking about frontage and access and so forth.
And councillor, how many, what do you think the frontage would be on if we did that?
So, I mean, the frontage would be, if the, if the plan got endorsed, we have, how much total we have now, Josh?
So it's 257 and 244, so just under.
About 500 feet of frontage with this design, right?
Sorry, 215.
257, yeah, it's on, it's on C2 of the other plant. 257 and then 244.
Yeah. Imaginary crunch. So again, just something, you know, if the board prefers to see this constructed, you know, with, you know, that's, that's something we'll talk about. But I'm just offering it as something that might be less disruptive to the neighborhood and the environment and the streetscape. Just something to consider, because we'll have the frontage by virtue of this plan going on record, you know, just won't be paved.
Thank you. I think we'd like to hear.
What's, what's the total frontage without the cul-de-sac?
So that's the existing frontage, Mr. Dennison, which is 325 feet.
Right, which is 75 feet smaller than two lots.
Correct, that's why we're here, yep.
Yep, I got you. Thank you.
So Kristen, if I could interject, I mean, I think too, I know maybe historically, it's been done a few times in Duxley, I'm not quite sure, but I think if you did, if you created the cul-de-sac, kind of the second option you mentioned at the end there, if you create the cul-de-sac, or I'm sorry, if you create the right of way, sort of in the shape of a cul-de-sac, if you create that right of way, but then you don't put anything in it and just leave it as sort of vegetation or street. And obviously, from, from your point of view, or the developer's point of view, I can see that's obviously, you know, tremendously advantageous. But I think that'd really be violating both kind of the letter and the spirit of the zoning bylaw, or of, I'm sorry, of the subdivision rules and regs. So to me, that just, I don't, I think that's kind of a, sort of a no-go, at least to my mind, it doesn't seem that it should really be considered at all.
And just throwing out there as an option, you know, the neighborhood might like it better, but, you know, ultimately, you know, we're working to get to a project that everyone's comfortable with.
Good. Does anybody have any questions right now?
Yeah, we're on one follow-up.
Yeah.
In this member board design, what's the motivation to not bring the Hammerhead out to the, out to the lot lines? Is it drainage?
You know, it's a good question. I don't know why, you know, I just got pulled in last minute, I'll be honest.
So one question that Pat had was the turnaround for the 43 feet in the preliminary turnaround that we did, we are actually gonna have to expand the left side, so it gets close. It's almost there. But really, we just, we're trying to limit pavement as much as possible, so we'll make it just big enough to allow that fire truck to turn around. You know, we don't go into it thinking, let's try to add as much pavement as possible. So that's really the only reason that's generating that, that size and shape.
Yeah, I don't know if I have questions, I have concerns. First of all, I want to say, Matt, I really appreciate your way in on that opinion. I understand that in terms of your rights, Eric, you're the owner and you have the right to subdivide the property, according to the rules, and that requires an access road. And so what we're looking at here is a a paper street to accomplish the objective of complying with the bylaw and technical basis. And then a hammerhead to accomplish the access. But it means that you're going to have to install a driveway off the end of each side of the hammerhead, right? Isn't that what's gonna happen here? I mean, I'm a practical person, I'm just in the legal part of it, and we have to comply, and it gives you, you know, the right to do these things. What I'm trying to understand is how it's actually going to work, because if you look at the contour lines, even on there, those heavy lines to the right of the hammerhead are indicating that you're adding fill in order to raise the grade just in proximity to the right of way and near the, the hammerhead, keep that level. The nature of this parcel, I know we're looking at it on paper, so it looks flat, but those are contour lines. And the fact that they're that close together means that that's a very steep slope. By my estimation, looking at one fucking contours, you've got anywhere from a 25% to a 35% grade there. You've got a small amount of what I would call buildable land at street level, which is similar to all the other houses on the street, except that all the other houses have enough room for a house and a yard, and then it drops off in the backyard. This parcel, on the other hand, you've got maybe six to 20 feet or something of flat land, and then it just falls, it dives. So say I want to put a house, as you've indicated, you know, down low, bottom of the hill, you've got to get a driveway off of that hammerhead, and it's immediately gonna drop looks like six feet in maybe 10. So like this, and then it's gonna go down a really steep hill to get to, I just don't see how it's workable, frankly. I mean, is it even feasible? It looks okay on paper. If you go over there and actually walk that land, it's an intractable. I mean, you're the engineer, right? Maybe you can speak to that.
We haven't got into a fully flushed out house design. We haven't got to that point yet. We really want to get this.
Yeah, you gotta understand if you can go forward.
Yeah, preliminary standpoint, we, we did actually place a couple houses. Really, if we have one here, oops.
I think the other one shows.
That's a touchscreen.
The other, the other plan shows them building envelopes, I think, right?
Yeah, that's on that one there.
Oh, yeah, go ahead, you can whichever one you want, Josh.
Now that I know it gets scrolling.
Yeah.
We're talking about the access and driveways and so.
So if we place a house here and here, it essentially accesses the retaining wall for it, so you have a walkout. So yes, it's, it's higher up front, and then you drop down.
Oh, so the circles aren't necessarily the planned location of the buildings?
Correct, that's just a lot shape. It's not a building circle. So the circles themselves.
That circle.
In the actual, that's all.
So it can't be.
It just needs to be on a lot. It doesn't say that it has to be in a buildable area.
Well, I guess this is part of why I'm struggling with this. I mean, I understand, we can try and take it stepwise and work through the process. But if we're being asked to endorse a subdivision plan, and the subdivision plan doesn't indicate where the driveways are gonna be, where the houses are gonna be, where the water lines are gonna be, where the fill is gonna be, this is very, very challenging parcel. So as far as a planning board member endorsing a subdivision plan, I'd really like to see that level of of detail, how it's gonna actually work, because the worst thing would be just have us, you know, sign off on this, and then it has to go out and say, oh, well, you know, it's a head scratcher, and now we gotta do all kinds of walls, and we're gonna have to clear the whole thing and filling, like. I just can't, I can't imagine going there. So I know it's, it's not what you might want, but I don't see how I can personally get through this and improve this without knowing how it's gonna work.
No, it's practical. So, yeah, I guess my response to that would be, I don't believe that your rules and regs have kind of a design review criteria relative to the created lots, right? I mean, you're concerned with the construction of the roadway, you know, the technical criteria relative to the right of way itself. I mean, those are legitimate thoughts to have, but it's really, it's a challenge for the builder to make something that someone would want to live in, right? If he, if he can't, if he's got a 30-degree grade driveway, no one's gonna want to live there, right? I mean, you know, and again, and he can't do certain grading due to wetland restrictions, so there's plenty of guardrails in terms of what can and can't be done practically and and relative to other boards, Board of Health, City of the Septics, those are all concerns that are germane, but I don't think they're directly relevant to.
Well, they are to the point where we're discussing, you know, if it's a subdivision plan and you're subdividing, and subdivision rules require you know, a paper street at least.
Right.
And then the access is gonna be another issue, and you're saying, well, maybe we'll build the Hammerhead and maybe we won't, and if we don't, we don't need the drainage structure, then what, what do we actually improve it?
So, so this is the plan in front of you, this is what's proposed, this is the roadway, these are the lot lines. The Hammerhead, you know, and again, Pat Brennan's peer reviewing this, this is what's proposed. I offered as, as something for you to consider, if you'd like us to, you know, put this on paper and take access off of Wadsworth, we'll consider. If you don't, then this is what's before you, this is what we've submitted, and this is what you're being asked to consider, just to be clear.
Well, because I want to try and work out, if you do the paper street, it's not a paper filled, and you put in two driveways.
Right, yeah.
Then what we've created is a situation where there is land which has been gifted, essentially. You've said, I'd like the town to have this land in order to make this a legal subdivision, and we've said, yes, thank you for that land. But then you put driveways in, and nobody ever develops the land, and it just basically stays private property. This is a point that's been raised a couple of times in this discussion, that the paper street, it, it's a convolution of rights, it's rarely, really muddy, and it makes me very uncomfortable.
Who, who's gifting? I didn't follow you there.
If, if you're saying we want to extend the public right of way.
It's not a public right of way. This is the public right of way, this is a private right of way.
But actually, the cul-de-sac, I think, becomes public because in order, it has, we have to have public frontage, so that does become public right of way. And what's, what's kind of concerning to us is it becomes public, but really, it ends up being used by the property owners.
So the town would have to accept it, we'd have to petition a town meeting for roadway acceptance for that to become a public right of way. It would be an HOA. It would be a private.
I think it would just, it would have to be eligible as a way. But I don't, I don't believe, and it could be a question for town council, but I don't think it would have to become a public right of way. I think it could just be, as you said, it could just be like a private way or private right of way, as long as it, but it does have to qualify as a way. And so it can't, and so to be a way, you know, it has to have certain dimensions and sizes, and it has to be paved at least to some extent, and because it's only a two lot subdivision, we allow the pavement to be a little less than we would for, say, a four lots or a larger subdivision.
Right, you, you've got your roadway construction criteria, certainly, and we've got a sheet, but yeah, all subdivisions.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't, so I guess I wouldn't call it a pay, in this case at least, I wouldn't quite call it a paper street, although I see your point, Ted, because it's, they are proposing, at least what's before us, they are proposing to pave part of it, sort of per the rules and regs.
I mean, a paper street is, you know, you'll see a paper street if a subdivision gets laid out, lots get sold, and then, then the roadway laid out on the subdivision plan is never improved, that, that's what gives rise to a paper street. And that was kind of a scenario that I offered to you, you know, obviously, if you require this to be constructed, it will be, you know? But all subdivisions are born as private ways. I don't think there is a mechanic for them to bring forth a public right of way within a subdivision.
I think I missed that there. I think Wayne wants to weigh in.
I, I, I do. I'm very, very cognizant of the notion that people would like to develop their property in a reasonable way. There is, however, no way that I am going to vote to endorse this particular plan. The, the whole thing is concocted in order to get around our zoning bylaw. And it's concocted in a, in a way that was confessed by the councillor that says, you know what we'd like to do is run two driveways. You're gonna run two driveways over 325, which is not consistent with our bylaw. So I, I'm happy to sit here and listen to public comment, but there is no set of circumstances under which I am going to say yes to this. I will tell you that we listened to it the first time, we respectfully listened to it for the first time, and sent it to town council for an opinion. When that opinion did not seem sufficient, we sent it to town council for another opinion. At this point, my view on this is a hard no. And the, and the fact that we're even continuing to consider this, I, I, I'm happy to hear from the public on this. If, if people really want to hear, want to do this, great. And I respect the landlord's right to try to do this. But no. That's my view.
May I respond in just 30 seconds? I think that merits a response. I mean, respectfully, Mr. Dennison, to say this is concocted as an end around of the subdivision bylaw, a Form C subdivision application was filed, and we've asked for a very modest number of waivers, so I don't know how you can comply.
I, I totally appreciate the respectfully portion of that. And I've spent a lot of time in front of judges where I, I want to respectfully disagree, but this is a concocted solution to the fact that there is not sufficient frontage for two lots. And you can't, you can't convince me of that otherwise.
Every subdivision is brought forward because you can't do an A and R. That's the purpose of subdivision controls, to create frontage, so that's what we're here for, that's what the statute's for, and that's what this board's purview is, so. Uh, that's what we're here for. That's what the statute's for, and that's what this board's purview is, so I I don't, I don't.
I, I, I'm one vote, and I am one vote, but you, but you know where it's going.
Thank you.
Before I open it up, just like I was gonna ask you, uh, Matthew, I didn't have anything else I needed to say.
Um. I mean, I guess just that, uh, there are a lot of waivers, uh, that are being requested. Um, you know, it's on which seems significant. Um, so at this point, I guess it's just something to definitely keep in mind.
All right, so see, I think, and have any else, anything else you'd like to say? All right, so we'll go ahead and open it up to the following. Um, and what I'm gonna be doing with this. Keeps everybody's attention all sharp. So does anybody from the public have any question? Yes, sir. And if you would state your name and your address too.
Gregory Washburn. I live directly, directly across the street, like fifty blocks from the road. Has anybody on the board seen this piece of property? Okay, it's insane, what you're trying to get. It doesn't have frontage. I agree with Dennison, absolutely. It's a pipe dream to get two houses in. There's a stream. Uh. A freshwater stream that's spring fed. On the bottom of property, there's a pond that's spring fed, but you can't see it because it's all overgrown. And it flows into the, uh, the bed, Kingston bed. There's, unless they bring in. You know, thirty thousand yards of fill. I don't know how you're gonna keep this, you know, it's, 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 in my opinion, it's insanity. One house, okay, along the street is fine. Two houses is crazy.
Anybody else, anything they'd like to say?
Yeah, you're talking, uh, nine Arrowhead Road. And, uh, I I I agree with what Tag's comment. Uh, and I'm, and I'm concerned about the fact that there's so many waivers. But when I moved into the, in the neighborhood, it was, it was with the understanding that we were basically living to the. Building codes and and right of ways and all that that. That existed at the time, and 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 we're making some modifications that I don't agree with. I think. Again, we should go with one house on one, on the one lot. It doesn't have the frontage, and and to be. Called a creative building or creative surveying, uh, I I don't agree with. So my point, I I'm I'm one person, but. I wouldn't agree with.
Thank you.
My name's Dan Manley. I live in Arrowhead Road, a few houses down from this, um. Uh, I would just, uh, share with the board that this is a really residential neighborhood. When I drive down the road, every time I drive down the road, there are children walking, mothers walking with their. Children and friends, there's people walking all through this. It's very. It, uh, it's it's very residential. And it seems like this plan is trying to cram two homes into a lot and should only have one. And that's just the wrong way to go with this neighborhood. Um, this is also a. This street at this point curves and goes down a hill. The sightlines are very difficult. They're. Frequently coming downhill or coming up the hill. Uh, I will almost have accidents with other cars because the sightline is so bad. You have to go twenty miles an hour or so, and adding. More vehicles, we'll say each one of these houses has two cars, having four more cars coming in on right at that point. The end of the road, people walking with their children and dogs, et cetera. It's just an accident waiting to happen, so I would. I would encourage planning board to follow the statutory bylaws on this.
Thank you.
I'm Janice Murphy-Linigan, and I live at Point Seven Arrowhead Road. I own, um, a good portion of the ravine, as we shall refer to it as, which is the area on the lower part. Up toward, so my property is up towards the Old Colony Road on that end of the ravine. This is an archaeological, significantly piece of property. The PBD Museum at Harvard came in, in, I think, around nineteen seventy-four, and did an archaeological dig. In the ravine and dug up many Native American artifacts. It's significant in history. Um, I have quite a collection of artifacts that I've collected on my property. Um, this, this was where the shoreline came in before Bay Road was built. And, um, it came all the way up to my property, which is up near Old Colony Road. Um, when Bay Road was built, it cut off the water access to this area. Once we lose that area, we'll never get it back. And I think it's a disgrace that people aren't looking at that. There is wildlife there that is absolutely beautiful. It's a deer park. Um, many of us know that. We can look out in the wintertime and see the deer sleeping in the snow all along the ravine. I mean, this will all be gone, and Miller will care about that because so many pockets will be lined. Without any consideration of what Mother Nature gave us as a gift. I think we need to think about that. We need to preserve what we have. And this is not preserving what we have. And Mr. Caffetter is absolutely right. That's a very steep end point. I wouldn't want to be. A driving down that driveway in the winter or paying ten hundred bucks. So that's one of these.
Any other comments? Yes, sir.
You might count, uh, a member of Board Health in town, just want to make clear I'm representing myself. Um, I'm in a buttered one Arrowhead Road. I did send a letter in, um, after reviewing the submittal. And I had a number of issues with both the waivers being requested, um. And. I guess as far as the the plan itself, just looking at the plan itself. They're, they're showing a wetland line on there. Within their submittal, it has a memo from the wetland scientist basically saying. It was worded, the site may contain coastal bank. Word for word, that's how it was written. That kind of raised a red flag in my mind. And being a coastal engineer for twenty years. And not seeing any sort of calculation or mention of coastal bank on the plan. It just raised a red flag, like something was not really thought through from the start. And being a coastal town, we are. It's off-putting to see something like this come in and review it and have this many. Issues. With the waivers being requested as far as from the get-go, you're not gonna propose a civic song. Knowing that everything is flowing downhill here into the flood zone. You look at the flood zones. It's basically the AE zone. Which is elevation eleven. And then it ramps up from there out to the BE zone, which is elevation seventeen. So you're basically staring down the barrel as you look out into Kingston Bay. With elevation seventeen to the top of that wave crest. To that BE zone. And then it ramps down from there. But that's also a coastal barrier resource area. When you look at the female. In this case, it was dated nineteen ninety. There's other portions that are wedged on to those areas. Data twenty twenty-five, but going back to nineteen ninety. This area of the shoreline was basically considered an important buffer between coastal storms and inland areas. Which often protects properties on land from. Serious flood damage. So I think. At a minimum. Like I said in the letter. As in the butter, as an immediate of butter, I'd like to see some consideration to the coastal bank and where that might lie in the property. So that does affect the wetland line. And the wetland buffer line and what's buildable on the plan. Basically planning. Two lots over forty thousand square feet. But that's based on the weapon line. And that's based on the weapon line that somebody submitted a memo for that raised a red flag themselves as a weapon scientist saying. This site may contain coastal bank. So I don't know if we just glossed over that on purpose. That was kind of infuriating for me to see that viewing that plan. And it, it hasn't changed. And that was a month ago. Actually, no, that. Someone can remind me when that memo was written. I think it was January.
Uh, the email that we have was, there's no date on it. The date of the twenty-fourth, I guess, if that was the date it was maybe put into our package.
Yeah, I'm talking about memo from ECR. We, the memo was dated January, and it was stamped June. You know, the scene, we have a wetland irrigation memo dated nine seventeen and submitted six eleven. Nine seventeen, two thousand twenty-four, submitted six eleven, two thousand twenty.
What you're talking about?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I thought you were referencing your letter. Okay.
Uh, no, the wetland.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yes, sir.
So, Madam Chair, I I I know that we have a, a fair number of waiver requests.
Yes.
And that people might want to speak to the waiver requests. But. Before we get there. I would like to make a motion to deny the endorsement of this subdivision plan.
Right, any discussion among the board?
Well. This is dangerous. It's a Form C application. This is a dangerous vote.
But we haven't, Wade is based, Wade, uh, we haven't closed a public hearing yet.
Yeah.
Nope.
You haven't deliberated about any of the waiver requests. You haven't deliberated, you haven't entertained what the peer review consultant produced, I mean.
I, I. I, 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 my view on, my view on this is we have to have a vote on. On whether this thing is even possible before we get to waivers. And that's what I'm doing right now.
If they want to do an arbitrary denial, that's probably, it's probably better off to do that.
It's probably better. Technicality, but if, if there is.
If you want to suggest that's an arbitrary denial. See in court.
I mean, endorse.
That's dangerous comments at a public hearing.
So I think, I mean, endorse, again, this is sort of a technicality, but I think endorse only applies to an A and R subdivision. So you'd be voting, I guess you'd be voting whether or not to approve it, I guess, or whether to deny the application, um. I guess, to be honest, I think it would be better.
Deny, we're gonna deny.
Public, it gives the public a more chance to play out, I guess, before, but it would be my honest advice.
The, 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 the public can chew. I'm happy to hear the, from the public. I'm, but I don't want to spend a whole bunch of time on waiver requests. When I don't think this is doable from the get-go.
I mean, I think you proposed a motion, uh, we've had a second, we'll have, uh.
I, I, I will, I will. I'll withdraw my motion.
Will we continue with the public hearing and the public comments? Yes.
Robert Kaufman, I live on. Um. I've lived there for about twenty years. Uh, I'm not an expert, well versus this gentleman over here, but it seems to me. Uh, putting two good-sized buildings into that ravine at a lower level is a tight fit. And I'm a biologist with training. And I haven't done any research on it, but it seems to me we run the risk of injuring. The wetlands that sit between the two pieces of property, unless I knew more. Now, that might be in some of the waivers, I don't know.
Can we respond to any of the comments?
Hold on, we're, we're, we'll finish up with this.
So I just throw that out as a concern. Uh, I don't have any technical data in which I stand. But that's, it'd seem a little odd to me that it could be the only buildings. In the ravine, all the other properties tend to be top of the hill.
Thank you.
Thanks. The end of my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public?
I would like to just say I'm not closely going through the waiver request, just for transparency. The engineer is looking to waive this particular site.
Thank you. All right, so we have gone through the comments from the public, and now what we can do is go back and, um, I think that the applicant wanted to. Uh, answer some, uh, provide some information.
So, you know, I appreciate the time. I I know the.
What's your name?
Arapont of the property owner.
Thank you.
So, you know, we've spent a lot of design time working on this plan. All's met with, you know, many people within Town Hall to go over potential scenarios. We have developed full conceptual plans for each house on each lot, and each first floor. Is higher than Wadsworth Road. You know, typically a house would be, you know, a foot and a half to two feet higher than its existing way. There is no house built in the ravine. There is no disturbance, even within the one hundred-foot buffer to the wetland. This would not even be a conservation filing. So. And I think, you know, the intention we came here with was a very well-developed plan that we've worked on for many months. We proposed a second scenario because I personally, living in this town, traveling that road all the time. Having friends that live on that road would much prefer to see the trees there than a bunch of infrastructure built. Directly across from this gentleman's house that serves two houses that isn't even needed. So we propose potentially at everybody's opinion, because we would think it'd be much better to leave the trees there. To ask if, if, if that was a scenario that people wanted to entertain. If that's not a scenario that people want to entertain, we can certainly build to every detail of the subdivision regulation. And speaking to the waivers, the majority of the waivers are submittal items. Like calculating the caliber of the trees existing. Other, you know, other technical items. They're not technical items that don't comply with the, with the zoning. So we can certainly go back and design every sheet of every detail and not have those waivers. But typically, a subdivision of this size is granted those waivers so that we don't have this twenty-page. Plan set for the two-lot subdivision. So, you know, I understand that the change is hard in the neighborhood. I respect that. I live less than a mile from the area. I have four children in the school system. I respect. Everybody's opinion in the room. I would like to do the best project possible here, which limits the tree clearing. Keeps the two homes as close to the road as possible so that we're not in the one hundred-foot buffer. I would like to work with the board and talk about how that can be accomplished. I think taking abrupt votes that don't look into the rights associated with the land, the technical nature of Pat Brennan's review. Is premature.
Let's play as Paul.
The four of us represent Mr. Pontiff's family of friends. Hours and hours looking at the same issues that you people just brought forth. Nothing that you folks have said tonight, with all due respect, are new to us. Okay, I live down the street and around the corner, been in town forty-seven years. I live in town, pay my taxes. I worked for the town many years ago, doing the engineering work. Whenever it first came to me, I said, Eric, this is a challenging lot. I said, let's look at it. Let's be objective. Couple of my veteran friends live down the street on Arrowhead and Wadsworth Road, Ian and Fred, John McKinney. Now, talk to them about this, okay? We know you can't put more than two lots here. As Eric said a few minutes ago, when you look at where the wetlands line is here, it's significantly in the rare portion of the four and a half acres. Okay, as I said an hour ago. We have to comply with the Wellness Protection Act. Section one says, section one forty. Uh, Article thirty relative to the hundred-foot buffer zone. If we were to build the entire house. In front of that area, we don't even have to go to the Conservation Commission. It's a non-issue. Obviously, it may make sense to disturb a little bit within the hundred-foot buffer zone, the regulations. As I think Mike knows, requires us to have, you know, fifteen percent impervious cover within the hundred foot. It's easy to do on this lot. As he knows from being a member of the Board of Health, we have to comply with Title Five plus the supplemental rules and regs for the. As he knows from being a member of the Board of Health, we have to comply with Title V plus the supplemental rules and regs for the Duck Spray Board of Health, one hundred fifty feet setback, Mike, for the Board of Health. Easy to do up at the street. Easy, piece of cake. Okay? We've looked at these items. We know it's difficult. We know it's going to be a change to the neighborhood. But you're talking two lots with three hundred twenty five feet of frontage, natural frontage. Come on. I could go by each of your lots and you have less than that.
Yeah, the houses will put in in the fifties.
I'm just, I just said said appointment, Mr. Washington. Okay, that was it. Okay, but we've looked at these items. Apparently, the issue might be trying to create frontage a different way. Okay? Randy, turn to innocent. Wayne, you and I have talked about this before. Okay, we're thinking out of the box. We're trying to do something a little bit different. If Pat Brennan in his peer review said, this is not going to work, we would respect that. He hasn't said that. At the development review team meeting a week and a half ago, Matt was there, Emily was there. Nothing was said about this project being unbuiltable. Nothing. We needed the opinion from town council. We've got it. Okay? Yes, it's a diff.
And 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 Paul, I'll 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 be candid with you. I have spent a ton of time with you. I spent it, I I I absolutely respect Mr. Pontiff and the work that he's done in town. This one just doesn't work for me, and you can persuade everybody else. But this one does not work for me because I don't think it complies with either the spirit or intent of the bylaw. And I I don't mean to denigrate anybody's effort to subdivide this. I don't mean to denigrate anybody's effort to make this work because I I think, you know, you and and the landowner are a- among the most thoughtful people working in Duck Spray. This one doesn't work for me, and you can persuade everybody else.
So if I may, very briefly, I would just, I'd like to hear, I understand no one wants another house on their street. I get it. I I wouldn't either. I'll be honest, you know. That's not what this board is supposed to do, and I would just like to hear you from the audience, be from board, one respect in which this falls short of the town of Duck Spray subdivision rules and regulations. I haven't heard anything. All I've heard is this kind of ad hominem doesn't work. It should be nature, you know, it's an Indian burial ground. I mean, I just, you know, again, you it's up to you guys. If you want to vote this down.
Uh, just to be clear, just to be clear, ad hominem means personal attack. Nobody's made a personal attack on anybody.
I stand corrected, Mr. Dan.
What what we have, in fact, done is twice consulted with town council. Um, and in both instances, town council has sig- has opined that this doesn't work. I am going to accept the notion that town council, who I've known for many years, has thought through this issue and has come to a conclusion that this doesn't work. But there is no ad hominem attack. In fact, I just said how much I appreciate Mr. Bragda and how much I appreciate Mr. Pontiff.
Could you provide one technical reason of why this doesn't comply with the zoning regulations? And provide one quote of Amy Questle's email that says this does not work.
Did you not interpret Amy Questle's email to suggest that this was not an appropriate subdivision?
I did not.
Okay, you and I read it differently.
So I I think one of the challenges that we've been having is a board that says is the 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 remaining parcels in town, you built the lots and built out, then there's often not enough frontage. And so ideally, we'd all like to see two hundred linear feet right along the street. And so I think that's really kind of in the heart of what Wayne's getting at. And we've struggled with this because we don't want to have people creating a, you know, paper cul-de-sac in their yard to 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 create space to have the two hundred feet of spr- of frontage. So that's that's what we're struggling with. Um, Wayne's probably struggling less and very clear, I might add. Um, I'm saying that just to lighten the mood, but I'm.
So you would need to revise the bylaw.
Well, you you couldn't because subdivision control is a is a state statute. So you're basically saying respectfully, I, you know, not to put words in your mouth, that you don't think this town should comply with the subdivision control act because you don't think there should be any more frontage created in town. That and again, that that's what I where I think we're talking across each other. We're not trying to shove a project on this room. We're not trying to skirt a rule. We're applying you know, in good in good faith, under the rules and regs of the town and under the parameters of the state subdivision control law to create frontage. That's what it's for. So if you say we think lots should only be created where there's an existing two hundred feet, then we'd be an A and R process. But that's the whole purpose of subdivision control is when there isn't frontage to create it. So again, I get it. If you if this board or the town at large thinks there shouldn't be any more lots in Duck Spray, that's fine, but that's a political construct. That's really not analyzing this proposal, whether or not it's complies with the rules and regs.
So I think that the reason that we've got the cul-de-sac shape, the keyhole, the cul-de-sac shape there is to get that frontage. And so you're not actually proposing to put.
Well, we are. Your regs also require a cul-de-sac shape.
Yes.
Your rules and regs require that. It it's not an arbitrary design.
Not a hundred and fifty feet. Is it a hundred and fifty feet eligible in this design meeting?
Yeah.
What's different between this design and what was approved across the street of the church?
Um, that was this private way that was put in with three different.
This is the same exact thing. Again, this is, I I I'm just concerned because, you know, Eric Carpenter talked about gifting, some people talk this would be a public way.
This is not a paper street. This is a street.
This is a roadway and it's a private roadway. It's exactly the same as Glynn Way. It's exactly the same as Cushing Drive, Eyes House Lane before they were accepted. And you I could probably pull twenty examples and come back with them, but that's what subdivision control is. You create frontage.
I I gotta rebut that strongly. Uh, again, on paper, sure, it's exactly the same.
It's always on paper until it's built. It's always on paper until it's built. There's no other way to do it.
Way together to the places that you mentioned. And again, I'm I I appreciate your comment about the review of the planning board and the issues of design within the site. That's private property. That's not under our review. The, and my understanding of what we're responsible for is understanding the impact of these developments on the public infrastructure of the town, the streets, the water supply. And although it is a conservation concern, uh, public amenities of the waterway. Uh, if we aren't cognizant of those issues, we're not seeing the whole picture. It's outside of the scope, but it still bears on the question of whether this is an appropriate and workable plan. Is it in compliance with the bylaws? It's borderline. And and so fundamentally, I'm going to break all of that down and just make the plain point. You have a large parcel with three hundred and twenty five feet of frontage which by right conveys you one household. And it because of the challenging topography of this site, it uh, would support one house easily, comfortably, with no backyard, I might add. Uh, so why? Why put us through this? Why subdivide it? Why not just build the one house? Consistent with the neighborhood, makes sense to everyone, no special permits, no, you know.
There's no law.
No, I know, I misspoke.
So, so you are all my neighbors. You're all my fellow townspeople. I think the disconnect that we have here is I come to the table into this room with a technical mind. Tag is coming back to me with an argument which is very political and personal.
Oh, no, no.
Then point out from to my technical mind, where on here do we not comply with the subdivision rules and regs?
Well, yeah, impact on the town, that that's not, I mean.
I have I have those same worries. That's not.
I have those that. We can have that in.
That's what I'm saying. So, but tell me from a technical standpoint, where we got this wrong?
Because in the, as I was trying to say before, it was interrupted, that the other examples that were mentioned are all fairly straightforward, flat. Parson, plenty of room. You can lay out your road, driveways, no, no real issues. There are so many issues with this that are created by trying to do two homes. That's that's why I bring it up. It's not political. It's a it's a just a concrete observation of.
But the challenge is measurements whatsoever.
I mean, I can, unless you do all the background work, how can we answer that question?
Please direct everything for me. I think that'll kind of.
Madam Chair, I mean, just just to briefly speak to that, that's why you have criteria within the subdivision rules and regs about drainage, surface water, utilities, et cetera. That those you need, that's addresses Mr. Carbon's concern, right?
Absolutely.
So again, simply to say this is not a great site for two houses is not responsive to, you know, and and it makes me wonder if everyone's familiar with the text of the subdivision rules and regs.
Thank you. So we here on the board, we just, we, you know, we have to go by the zone. We can't look at everything else. I understand what you're asking.
Well, and I'm thinking specifically about cases that I've read about where it's exactly like this, where a contractor builder insisted that this could be built, this is fine, it looks good. And then when the engineers actually looked at it, surveyed the site, it got all going, and they said, no, that's crazy. You can't do that. That you've exceeded a grade requirement. So you got Pat Brennan's technique. You've got Pat Brennan to help you with that.
So.
I know, yeah.
But we don't have any identification of where roadways are. So how how is he gonna do that? Don't we all in this room want to have a set of rules and regulations that we all have to abide by? If any one of, if any one of these neighbors in the in the room needs to replace their septic system, do you want an arbitrary person coming to you and saying, I don't think you need to have a four bedroom system. I think you should have a two bedroom. Take down the walls of your house. No, you don't want that. You want the regulations to dictate what you can do on your property. It's it's, this is a I I've known Tag for a wa- a long time. I appreciate his opinion. I share similar opinions. But if we can't point to a technical reason here, it would be beyond all of us to agree with his opinion right now. We want to be able to to say, these are the laws in Massachusetts. These are the bylaws within Duck Spray. This complies, check or not. It doesn't matter whether, you know, you like me or not, whether I, you know, I wore a call or shirt here or not. It matters what is on the paper. Does it comply with the regulations or not? And that's all we should be evaluating.
Thank you.
And if we're going to have these arbitrary opinions, those are things that we'll do in a working group and we will modify those bylaws and regulations. But as peers, it's wholeheartedly wrong to exclude someone to have a house here when you have your house and you comply with regulations. Regulations for us are for us all to follow.
Great, thank you very much. Is there any other comments or questions for the board? Um, Matt.
Yeah, um. Being a commercial real estate attorney for twenty years, I appreciate where you guys have represented many developers. I appreciate what you've done here. Where I cannot approve this plan when you want to get into the technical standpoint is we've gone back and the question is, and and Rob, it's not a question of whether you can create the the street and the frontage. That is the purpose of the subdivision control law is to create, you know, a subdivision where enough frontage isn't there. Where my problem is on this is we've sent this this issue when Paul was in in January, I think, and we sent it up to town council on whether the paper streets and whether we could, because we've we're we're going to address this issue. This is not going to be the first or the last time we address this issue. And Amy has come back and said in her her email this morning, and the way I interpret this, in my opinion, and I'm reading from Amy. This provides that all, not all of the two hundred foot frontage along the right of way must be paved, but as I find above, excuse me, at least a portion of the paving must provide access to those lots. Now, Rob has made the argument that that means it does not have to go all the way to the borderline.
But wouldn't we just continue that for the next time we see you?
Well, so, but if you're asking for, at least for my share, you're asking for an approval tonight on that plan.
But what if I wanted a dirt driveway? What if I wanted a shell driveway? What if I wanted a stone driveway?
But you're asking in front of the board to approve this plan as drawn now, I would be a no based off of the interpretation of town council. Rob, I get it. You may not agree with that, and that may be a legal issue. It needs to be decided.
No, you you're within your rights to cast a no vote based on town council's guidance, but wouldn't it be more customary i- in any proceeding at the at the town level to identify an issue, say, we'd like you to modify your plan and come back to say, it's time to vote it. I don't like it. You guys can vote.
I'm fine with continuing.
That's a bit of an odd posture to take.
I'm okay on that.
If that's the only shortcoming, that's an easy fix. So it would be very peculiar to say, we're voting it tonight and that's that. And and you know, again.
No, no, I I.
It's not your position.
To continue the public hearing and have you come back. And I I believe there are some other engineering.
Sure, I thought we'd get to him.
Revisions that need to be done on the plan to incorporate Paul's comments. So I'm not voting, but if you asked me to vote tonight.
That's perfectly fair.
But I'm fine with continuing the public hearing and see if some of these.
I mean, typically, the board would say we've got these concerns and can you address them or not? And if we're not capable of addressing them, then we'll we'll go home, take our ball and go home. But, you know, that's.
And a lot of the comments that the neighborhood is, they are are legit, but some of them are, uh, in my opinion, are out of the purview. But that does not discount any of the wetlands and and other runoff protection that board health issues that will need to be addressed.
Yeah. I'm on conservation. Yes.
Uh, no, I I didn't, other than to say, you know, we do have an opinion from town council as as has been identified. Uh, so, you know, we're taking basically a straw poll vote here. Um, I'm inclined to say no based on that as well. Um, but continue the hearing, uh, provide other other changes could be made. Um, I certainly may be interested in entertaining provisions that you would make in order to comply with town council's success.
Yeah, I like it.
I I am, uh, just to be clear, I'm fully committed, if we want to continue the hearing, to address town council's opinion in order to make sure that the applicants have every ability to show that this is compliant with the state law. I'm I'm all good with that. So th- that's where I'm at on continuance.
Lauren, anything? Yeah, it's not. Back anything else?
Well, what I was trying to get at is, you know, um, so far, up until now, we had a brief, you know, conversation earlier in the year, but, you know, we've been able to just look at the paperwork. And now, you know, you've been grateful for coming. Appreciate that. And you told us things that are different from what we see here. So this makes it very difficult to make a decision. If there's a way for you to depict your assertions and show them on the paper, you know, so that we can evaluate that objectively, that would help tremendously.
Um, do we as a board want to talk about any of the waivers tonight? Have a discussion about that?
Feels to me as if it would be premature, maybe it's worth going.
Can you even talk about the last next time? I mean, it's been it's been an hour, over an hour, that limits, it might be more.
I think it would be helpful that Paul on the next. Yeah, well, I mean, I'm sorry, yeah, um, if he's available.
Okay. Do you want to talk about it with him then?
I think, yeah, I think it would be helpful.
Um, all right, do we maybe want to consider a motion to continue the the public hearing?
Sure, I'll need to continue the public hearing the next scheduled planning board meeting.
Okay. I'm waiting to remember that date is, I believe it's August eighteenth.
Hmm.
Well, everybody here.
Did I make the request? Just, I'll be right. If it is continued.
Yes.
For the items brought up to five, Paul Brennan and the other design review team members, that each of those items get addressed in a letter from the.
Um, that's, uh, where are we in the, have we received a letter from you all yet with with regard to the points?
First thing we hear, Madam Chair, is do we go with the same design that we submitted in June? Follow Pat's recommendations, revise the plan accordingly, which we discussed at the development review team meeting two weeks ago. Knowing what we know tonight and has something changed between original designs submitted last month and tonight? I think so. Okay, do we want to spend the time and effort and and money, indirect and direct costs to revise a set of plans that may change when we come back again in in August? There may be a a further opinion from attorney Questle. I would hope there would be or something to clarify something. So all the attorneys on the same wavelength. That may be impossible. Okay, but I think in deference to the neighbors, to Mr. Pontiff and his company, and especially to the town, we've got to go in one direction. And right now, I think we're still moving in a different direction. And I still want to emphasize the fact that separate conservation from border health from planning board. Three separate boards, three separate areas of jurisdiction. So let's not talk about wetlands and erosion and everything else at the bottom of the ravine because it's outside the authority of the planning board. Okay, you may want to come back to the Conservation Commission. You may want to come back with Board of Health, but that's a separate issue. That's why we came to the planning board first. Without two lots, we have one lot, obviously. If we don't get through this board favorably, then we're not going to see the commission, Conservation Commission. We're not going to see the Board of Health. And that's fine. That's the way we usually work these plans with subdivisions. But I'm still going to bring up the fact of one senior going away across the street. Steve, you know that very, very well. I do too, Ian as well. Okay, let's go to Nash Road off of Surplus Street. I do too, Ian as well. Okay. Let's go to Nash Road off of Surplus Street. Same sort of, uh, same sort of design with, with the hammerhead. Yes, no wetlands on Glen Way. Yes, no wetlands on Nash Road, but we have wetlands here. Look at the plan. We're two, 300 feet away from the wetlands and it works. Okay. So let's just be objective in looking at, let's just say, the maximum buildable feasibility that we have with 51 lots. You're not going to see, you know, two homes from King Caesar Road come over here. That's not going to happen. It kind of happened. We don't want that.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
I just, I just want to ask a quick clarification of them. Uh, I thought from what somebody said there on, on your team. So I thought somebody said there was a possibility depending on where you get this squeeze the houses in, they might not need to apply to the conservation commission at all.
If all work is outside the 100 foot buffer zone map, we don't have to, by law.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify.
Yep, that's it.
Yeah.
Well, with protection.
So you might apply, I mean, assuming of course there's a fine work, which is you might apply to CONCOM or you might not depending on sort of precisely where it's situated.
Yeah, if I was going to go back here, the conservation commission would say, no way. I, I mean, that, that's, you know.
So we have one more question.
Could I just ask how the 100 foot buffer zone was determined? And if it was.
I.
And if factored in the coastal bank is.
I, I, I were, I don't, we're not going to know that. That's just on the map.
I can speak to it.
Do you want to speak to it?
Just briefly. So 100 foot buffers just up. Um, we looked at it initially off of LiDAR. Uh, if we're going to get real cross section, then we want to get that top away to the wetland. Um, based on LiDAR, the 92 line is still down. With the elevation 11 as well, going to the left. And obviously the wetland being so flat, it doesn't predict. If we want real cross section, then it's likely to get harder to do it.
I know your comments. It's not like me.
Yeah, no, I, I just, I'm a technical guy, like Eric was saying, and reviewing the plan. Reviewing where that coastal bank is, whether it exists or not. There's a, there's guidelines. There's six figures you look at to see in this scenario. Flood zones here, and if the slope going up from the flood zone is steeper than four to one. That basically gets extended all the way up to where it flattens out to less than four to one. And at that point, that's the top of coastal bank. And the top coastal bank in this case, wherever that intersects that weapon line, it's landward of that line. That determines where that 100 foot buffer zone is. And those are the numbers that they're presenting in front of you. That are greater than that 40,000 square feet that is a requirement of the board. In order to subdivide into two lots greater than 40,000 square feet. So in order to figure out if both of those lots, 40,000 square feet or more, you need to know where that 100 foot offer zone is and you know where that wetland line is.
So, Mr. What I would suggest is that, uh, Matthew, would you mind sharing his letter with, uh, uh, Paul, with, uh, Kat Brennan and just having, I'm thinking about that and see, I'm not sure if he's the right person, but maybe start there and just make sure. Did those questions or are they, he's able to address those questions? All right. Um, all right. So we were in the process, anything else? So we were in the process of continuing, discussing about whether to continue in reading.
I, I would like to, to make one further comment. Council suggested that I made personal attacks against other people. And I just would like to publicly state how much I respect Mr. Bragda, how much I respect Mr. Pontiff. And my concern about this has nothing to do with them personally. It has entirely to do whether, whether this is a good plan.
Thank you, Liam. All right. I'm sorry. We're, did we have a second?
I, I think we had the motion and the motion's been seconded. So I think it's so.
Any discussion, uh, now we need discussion to get along with the board. All right, we'll call, uh, we'll call for a roll call vote to vote whether to continue the public hearing.
Matthew Ray, Steve can't I.
Kristen, I.
I.
Florence, I.
Wayne Dennis and I.
August 18th. August 18th.
August 18th. So we're going to go ahead and continue the mode, the, uh, the public hearing now. Yes.
Madam Chair, if there's a possibility of extending that for two weeks till your next meeting, whether it's late, late August or early September. Based on what we hear tonight and talking to Mr. Brennan and everything else, maybe town council addition between the teams. I just want to make sure we have ample time to revise the set of plans, get them back to Mr. Brennan and anybody else you direct us to. So we can all share the review and the comments and come back with a hopefully an open mind at the next meeting and hopefully do the best we can.
Emily, what's the meeting?
Um, so we only have one in August. The next one after that is September 8th. Would that work? Does that give you enough time? More like six.
Yeah, that's great. September 8th.
Uh, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I mean, I guess just one thing maybe to keep in mind is that your revisions may also, in the law, at least your, 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 your visions of your final design may depend on kind of decisions made about waivers as well.
So do another vote, continue to.
Do another, another vote to extend it to the date of September.
No, the motion.
Yeah, the motion was scheduled with other date. I know you talked about the date.
Yeah, but I didn't say next.
So we said now it is.
I think so.
Okay. Um, may I have a, I'll entertain a motion to hold the extended public hearing, to do the public hearing to September 8th. Thank you. Okay. Any discussion? Here are none. I'll call for a roll call vote, starting with that.
Matthew Ray, I.
Kristen, I.
Wayne Dennis and I.
Thank you all very much. Thank you, everyone. All right. Next up is the Brooklyn Farms discussions. Uh, next up, the planning board goals. So. Now that we have the MBTA behind us. Oh, we need to, uh. Do you have any questions? Should have asked this before.
No, I'm just, just, uh, I'm just listening, um, to the meeting. Um, I don't have cable, so I have to sign in to listen.
Okay, thank you. All right. Uh, so. Continue our PBA administrative. Uh, questions. Um, so.
Can I, can I ask the new planning director to, to call me directly tomorrow?
Uh, yeah, sure.
Thank you very much.
Anytime.
Yeah, you, it just call me and we'll figure out a time, but I'd like to speak with you.
Um, okay. So are planning, if you, if you guys would ever, could everybody pull up the, do you have access to, you know, planning board goals? So basically we talked about this. Um, so we would get together with the select board. And so we started talking about what our goal, what, what do we want to focus on, right? You know, tonight was a, was something that we've talked about, like how do we address this? All right. So we can just talk about this. We talked about these paper, you know, paper cul-de-sacs and are we going to handle, uh, more, more, more lots that are short on frontage but have the, the acreage? How do we, is that something that we, we want to talk about that conceptually? We want to talk about that in terms of this particular. I don't know.
Well, uh, in the last round, earlier this year, I had asked Becca and now I'll ask Matt. Uh, to, uh, basically do a straightforward query in the, in the GIS system to identify parcels that have fewer than 200 feet or fewer than 400 feet of frontage and more than three acres. Uh, because every single one of those parcels is a potential, we think, paper street of subdivision. And I've done, you know, the, the visual version of that, but I don't have the ability to write the query to extract the street frontage. That's what's holding me back on that. So if you had to go to do that.
So, so Ted, it's worse than that. Uh, because anything that used to be permitted has been revived.
Right.
It, it's, there's a, you can revive these lots irrespective of the merger doctrine. Um, so we don't have just what you just described. We have a lot of this in front of us.
Yes, agreed.
So.
So.
But I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, just I wanted to clarify. I mean, if, if, if Ted, if you, I mean, I don't have the GIS. I don't, I don't have it on my computer for one thing, but I, I, I don't have the knowledge anymore. I could probably, I could probably learn and get it back in my head. But I think probably the, the assessor's office might be able to do that. But, um, remind me again, what you, what you wanted, you said the, the lots.
Uh, yeah, it's, it's just the combination of short frontage and in play rich.
So lots with like over.
Yeah, because there's two categories.
More than 200 feet of frontage.
The one we have right now is a classic between 200 and 400. So, you know, a single acre parcel, but multiple acres in the back.
Okay, yeah. So between, between 200 and 400.
Yeah.
Um, plus maybe greater than.
Uh, two, three, whatever, four acres.
Uh, Matt, Matt, I'll get you the access to GIS.
Is the root of the cause maybe an ambiguity now in the zoning bylaw that needs to be addressed to?
Well, I was a little confused. You said this is in your regulations. We can, we have to do this call. So do they?
I, I recommend not discussing this particular one.
I agree with that. I a hundred percent agree with what Matt just said.
Sorry about that. Sorry. Okay.
Yeah, no, my comment was more on the paper street concept of not this particular applicant that was just in, in, in Carrick, but in the short term, I've been on the board. This is what the second or third time we've addressed this issue. Um, and it's not as we've all correctly know, it's not going to be the last. So is it something that we need to look at potentially in the bylaws to address, to eliminate ambiguity going forward? And I, I, I don't know the answer to that just right now, but it's, it may be great to find out how many of those properties are susceptible to this. But that's just the data point. Once we have that, how do we avoid having to have repeating this?
Well, I only ask because it's a magnitude.
No.
Of problems.
Right.
If it's a handful, a dozen that we can get through in the next three years, then that's that. If it's hundreds, then we need a bylaw now. You know, that's the way I see it.
Agreed. I, I mean, I'm just looking at Amy's answer. I, I agree with Amy's.
Oh, no, no, we're not talking about Amy again. Sorry.
If looking at the, the clearing up any ambiguities or, or maybe ambiguous is not the right word, but you know, revising the language on this, the bylaw made. Kind of some of these issues in the past.
It just seems like one of those.
One, one of the things that I think we should do that we have not done for many, many years is to take a real hard look at the zoning bylaw because we're the people who can propose amendments.
Yeah.
And I and for years and years and years, you couldn't get a zoning amendment through. We got one through this special town meeting, right? W- w- we did. And.
Yeah.
Got another one coming.
And, eh, you know, I spent a lot of time thinking about those bylaws. Uh, and apparently I'm thinking about them through 2030, uh, according to the select board. Um, and we should have been them to, to make it work. Uh, but we got in a, we got a zoning amendment through the bylaws this year. It, we should not be hesitant about trying to fix the gaps, the inconsistencies and the unclarity in the bylaw. That's my view.
Wayne, I totally agree with you. Because they're, they're meant to be helpful, to be guidelines, right?
They're meant to control. I mean, it literally, they, they're meant to control what we could do in this town.
So Wayne, you mentioned the, uh, I don't know what the proper legal term is for this sea change that was made to bring back the zombies of, of the past. Uh, is there anything we can do about that in our bylaws?
Nope. Uh, that was a part of the Massachusetts general law, um, revision. And so things that used to be merged because they were in the same ownership are no longer merged. If you have, uh, if you had a buildable property um, that used to exist, and I'm a hundred percent confident that Matt is advising clients on this and going to be able to make this work for him. Uh, if you had a buildable property that used to exist and the fact that the person next door now owned both properties. There's no merger anymore. That's Massachusetts state law.
Wayne, do you know when that law was changed to allow? Did, did you refer to 2023 before, like when that change was made? To allow or is that?
I, I'm going to defer to Matt, but I will tell you that it's in existence right now. And it probably happened as of the first of the year.
Better than the last 12 months.
In my, my experience in Cameroun and Hanover was that it was, you know, it was kind of like a problem in theory, but it rarely happened. It rarely came up in practice, but if this is a brand new thing that's just changed in the past, whatever, seven, nine months, then, then obviously that changed everything. So.
Yeah, well, as Wayne pointed out, it, it was changed at the legislative level. So it's, you know, it, it binding. Um, unless a court ends up overruling, but I don't, as of right now, as we stand here, yeah, it's too long to land.
Do you think that's going to, I don't know if you can answer this, but do you think that's likely to I give rise to a kind of a dramatic flood of new applications or maybe just a few per year? Maybe two other to say.
Yeah.
Have we received a single one of those so far?
And I, I, I'm not going with flood, but I'm going with, yeah, we're going to get a few of those. And, and quite frankly, that's what the mass law is right now. And we're going to comply with it. We're going to fully comply with, with it. But I, I don't think we're going to get a flood, but we're going to get more than a few of these.
All right. So, uh, to follow up though, Wayne, on the zoning, the, uh, the zoning recodification group is picking back up again Wednesday, which is good news. Uh, once that gets organized, then that'll, I think that'll be much easier to start this conversation, to read through things. Um, I'll update everybody at the next meeting. Um, but as, as far as the other goals, uh, we just.
Yeah. And the next thing was really the inclusionary.
And, and where, where, how does the board feel about working on that? We need to kind of a refresher.
Were, were they revising the bylaw? It was supposed to come back to us with a revised draft?
With an NICC. Yeah, they haven't drafted and we haven't, um, town council hasn't looked at it yet. It kind of got pushed off because of the.
Would you mind poking Amy and see, uh, and see if she could, she or she could take a look at it for, in time for our next meeting and send us over a, anything good? Why don't we try to talk about that then? So that was at the top of the list. So short term, we had compliance with MBTA, new ADU, those are passed, which is awesome. And then the third thing was the amended Duxbury inclusionary bylaw. So I recommend we just keep that one. Um, long-term ones were, um, comprehensive plan implementation. So that would be with support from town manager and the town committees. Um, so one, uh, one idea would be to go before, when we meet with the select board to talk, would be to talk about that and remind them that we need help from the town manager to. from the town manager to do the implementation. So Matthew, he was asked to, um, so Chris Ryan put together a implementation table and I think he worked on it, actually Tag helped. Did a ton of work on it. And then that would allow, basically said, okay, you're on comm, comm, here are all the to do's that we found in the, in the comprehensive plan. And it was a lot to ask the planning director to follow up and a lot to ask the board members. So really, we, I believe it, it, it sits with the town manager. So, um, let's put that, uh, when we meet with the select board, we can ask them where that stands and how that goes.
And when you say that, I'm sorry, when you say the comments of planning, you mean envisioned, envisioned.
Exactly. Yes, yes, yes. Sorry. Go ahead, Ted.
Yeah, so I'll give you the, my, my, my spiel on this, you know, at the end of the, you know, envisioned Duxbury Global Comprehensive Plan, uh, was an implementation table with a very robust, I'm sure you've looked at it, it's, you know, ten, twelve, fourteen columns of assigned priorities and, and he's responsible and, and broken out according to those, like two hundred and fifty-three street action items. Um, and that took about three days to actually boil those up because it was a, you know, a classic. We converted between a table and a spreadsheet several times. It was a night, but so I reduced it to a data set so that we could track progress against it. Emily and I worked together on that. There is a, a, a mechanism in place, a program in place where the the boards, committees or department heads can provide updates to Emily about the status of their action items. And she can go through and revise the spreadsheet. I don't know where it stands now, but I believe that that is something that the, the planning board or planning department owes the select board at this point, because that tells us where we are with implementation of the plan. Now, the other thing about the comprehensive plan is that it is now going on six years old. It's my understanding that these things need to be revised every five years. And I tried to push for that last year and there's no interest. We have plenty of other work to do, you know, but my concern at this point would be, oh, let's take a six-year-old plan and say, let's implement. And then some of it is, you know, obsolete and, and some of it is just off the mark. You know, where we should be doing something different now. So I'm a little concerned about saying, well, we should drive forward with that comprehensive plan. Now, but if you want to talk about implementation, we have a housing production plan, affordable housing production plan that's hot off the presses. Begging for implementation. So I have to make my pitch for that here as the liaison to the housing trust. They need an implementation. They need a way to, you know, get some legs on, on the, and drive that forward. And I'd love to see a way to somehow tackle, you know, both of those things rather than have these individual head hot committees that are going down these narrow rabbit holes. I think it should be handled at an entire level. That's just my.
Well, I think, uh, the livable Duxbury. What's the kind of the committee or the task force?
Council on Aging Standing Committee.
Yeah, yeah. So, I mean, they're definitely also pushing, um, on the housing issue especially, is my impression. You know, obviously that the town has a, a growing number of retirees and seniors and so forth. Uh, and so, yeah, it's something that they're focusing on. Um, you know, a lot of people want to downsize, but don't have any options to do so in Duxbury. You know, obviously just the affordability is, is a crisis as well. And so, yeah, there may be opportunities for a lot of overlap in those efforts. Um, and I think, um, certainly it's, it's a question of, yeah, trying to find ways to implement at least a few things, um, uh, and not necessarily, not necessarily kind of to, to create more plans or even documents, but kind of strategize how to actually maybe lay the political groundwork or other things just to sort of start to strategize sort of some, even if it's only some modest changes, some, some implementation steps.
Ted, how in the world are we going to do two hundred and fifty-three different things?
Oh, we're not.
I, I, I mean collectively, we're, we're a town. How, how in the world are we going to do two hundred and fifty-three different things?
I can speak to.
Let's pick five.
Yeah, well, and that's what you do. You have to cherry, cherry pick off the top and prioritize. And the planning board owns, I think, ninety-four of them.
Yeah.
All right. They're not going to do ninety-four things. I love the planning board. They're not going to do ninety-four things.
Yeah, so Wayne, a, a lot of it was, it was dispersed. So there are some groups who have manageable chunks. We do have a big chunk, but you're right, to your pointer. What are, what are our five? So that's like, that's what I wanted to talk about tonight. Like, what are our five? Do we want to? So we said, okay, inclusionary by, uh, the inclusionary bylaw, definitely encourage you to touch base with the town manager, see how he's doing with the implementation of his staff. And then we want to, we know that we want to recodify and revise the zoning bylaws. We're, I think we're committed to that. Um, coastal residency was another one, and that's a tricky one, I think, without, um, uh, funding for another planner or a, a commit, commitment from the town to support the grant writing. Um, that's kind of tricky, um, but we can continue, we can talk to this select board about that. And then kind of to following up on Matthew, what you had said about implementation about from the livable Duxbury Task Force and livable, the Duxbury Affordable Housing, like, do we want to start talking with those groups again about housing options? Are there things that we can do to encourage some type of alternative housing that would tie into our, our envision Duxbury, because that was definitely a hot topic there. Is that something this, how does this board feel about that? I know it's a touchy subject. That's why I'm asking.
But, and that was something that we were hearing over and over again, returning to, you know, to communities' deliberations and it was, we need to have more housing in town, especially for retirees.
Alternative. Not just a one house for one.
Correct, yes. Um, so I, I, I think we would be remiss if we were not confronting that head on uh, and really having that as a priority for this board to embrace. Um, so I, I think that needs to be very high on our list. We have to do that. You know, we can, I'd like to take us a little bit of a step back as well because, uh, I don't know, you, Stephen, had told me about the zoning atlas. There was the Yes. launch event for the Massachusetts zoning atlas, and that was replicated across all fifty states. My understanding that there is a national zoning atlas, there is a push to, uh, you know, uh, create more uniformity in construction rules because it's identified as a barrier in the marketplace. So, you know, the, the reform train has left the station here in Massachusetts and across the country. And so I think this board's coming on us to understand that. Trajectory, like we're Duxbury, we're way in the back of the train here. We've been holding it down for decades and decades of not allowing any change. And now that whole regime is really being pushed over. So I think that the approach that we've taken to date of this sort of incremental, you know, we'll add a section and we'll tweak a little here and move, we won't touch it. We're not going to touch it. Uh, uh, we can't maintain that approach anymore under the, under the face of this pressure is my understanding. I mean, if we don't do it, the state is going to reach in and do it. You know, so inclusionary is an example of that. MBTA obviously also an example of that. Um, so, you know, I've been trying to educate myself about the wide varieties of zoning across the country and what, what is this standard or this emergent, you know, target that we're getting at. And it definitely is, uh, you know, smaller. I mean, they have, uh, in, on the books here in Massachusetts, the forty Y zoning for quarter acre lots and twelve hundred square foot homes, starter home zone, is what they call. That sounds like what people are asking for here in Duxbury. Maybe not the quarter acres, but certainly the smaller homes uh, are of interest. So this is what I'm wondering is, is, you know, in addition to this incremental work of, of, you know, inclusionary zoning and, and recodification, which we have to, that's housekeeping, that's maintenance. You know, what is the actual slug of zoning capability or options of rights or however you want to phrase it? That, that works for us, that, you know, we should get ahead of that rather than have something thrown at us and then have to react the way we did that year. My picture.
I've spent town in this, I've spent time in this town for forty-five years, actually a little more than that. I think that this town has grown in a beautiful way. I love this town. And I do not want to do anything that adversely affects the fundamental character of the town that we live in. And there may be some developments nationally that make more sense other places. We live in Duxbury and, uh, uh, one of my fundamental, I want to make Duxbury great again. And candidly, it never stopped being great for me.
I was just about to ask you.
It never stopped being great for me. And, and so I don't want to make fundamental changes. What, what I'd like to make are changes that are meaningful to people in this town who've lived here for years and who can then continue to live here. And I, I, I'm fully committed to making reasonable change. I'm, I'm not big on a sea change.
Wayne, do you see opportunity though, kind of to say, to making it livable for people who live here now? Do you see opportunity in small pockets?
Candidly, the MDT, MBTH Communities Act permitted more activity on, in Island Creek. And I don't know exactly what the best outcome here is. But my, I would absolutely hate it if, that I was somehow responsible for a change that made this place something other than what it is. And I, I, I've been here a long, long, long time. And I, I'm candidly, I love this place. And I, I understand other people love this place. We got to make changes in small measure. That's my view.
May, maybe, you know, maybe one, regardless, there's a larger conversation. It's kind of, uh, but maybe one way forward perhaps is to look for options where it can be things that, that don't increase the overall density. Uh, but leave us, and again, this is obviously an odd concept of, yeah, I mean, you see very early in the zoning bylaws, I guess, um, you know, with, um, cluster zoning and so forth, you know, that that, that allow you to put aside some open space, allow the developer to put aside some open space and then cluster the houses or, or as even townhouses perhaps, you know, more closely together. Because I think, you know, there's no doubt from everything I've heard, I've only been here whatever, two, two or three weeks, but there's no doubt from everything I've heard that you're going to get tremendous pushback, political pushback if you try to do too much, if you try to propose too much development or too much density. But maybe one way around that a little bit is to say, look, we're not proposing, we're not going to allow developers any more density than, than they would otherwise get with the conventional subdivision. We're just having a slightly different configuration, which might work better for some seniors and retirees because this way they don't have to like mow the lawn or whatever for a, they don't have to take care of an entire one acre lot, uh, and all those other things that go with it. So and maybe, you know, I think it'll be difficult, but maybe that's one way forward. I'm sure there could be a lot of other good ideas that are going to come to us gradually as we if, if we do kind of, you know, proceed with this, which I think we should.
No, I, I, I agree. I mean, um, I, I think the ideas are goals are great, but the practical reality is the townspeople are going to tell us what, what we can do and what we can't. And I think we probably have to listen to what they've said. And instead of looking at this gigantic list of everything, it gets overwhelming and you're shut down because you say, well, I can't do all of this. Address it from there we can. And I think affordable housing in some manner, vis a vis the aging population is probably one of the biggest direct effects. Now, how do we get there? That's the tricky question because I agree with Wayne. I think when you go out to communities, the large population is going to say, that all sounds great, but pump brakes. I don't want to change it too much. So how do we make those incremental changes to, so, you know, try to address those? It's not an easy answer, but that's one of the things we have to view. I mean, I, I agree. Revising zoning bylaws is no rain, right? The inclusionary bylaw is a no brainer. As Tag correctly said, those are under maintenance. How do we thoughtfully make changes without changing the fabric of the town? Sorry, it's going to be a tough balancing act.
Absolutely.
I think we're going to get a lot of pushback. You know, we, we label it affordable housing, whatever. We're going to see the MBTA community act all over again. We're going to have a pushback, yeah. I think we need to be thoughtful on how we label it and changes, talk, it's small steps.
I guess when I talk about, uh, slug, I use that term slug and then you, Wayne, it identified it as a sea change. I'm not necessarily proposing a sea change, but I'm not, I'm not suggesting that this board, you know, go into a, a closed room and write a whole section of the bylaw and then come out and say, here, pass this. That's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about more like Matt saying, you know, identify what the options are. Close off the ones that we know nobody here wants and then talk to people about the ones that remain and say, what about this? Can we do this? Where can we do this? Where would this make sense? That's the conversation I would be forward to having with everybody in their neighborhood, in my neighborhood, you know? That's, I feel that's what you're saying.
The, the part of that I loved was where do we make, where does this make sense?
Yeah.
Because the, the second we started asking questions, we're better off.
Yes.
And I, I thought what you said was absolutely a hundred percent on point. Where does this make? And we're a community and people have very different views on how this community should grow. And as a planning board member, I have to listen to them. Where does it make sense is the best question we can ask.
Well, and I guess in order to, uh, get an answer to that question, and this is where I go back and, um, so just as I made to you earlier, Kristen. Um, and I, I'd like to ask your familiarity on this, Matt. And so I've recently learned that some municipalities, larger ones in particular, uh, establish and maintain a growth management strategy. And Duxbury's growth management strategy is minimized for the town. That is our strategy. And so this is why I want to make this a public conversation about what is our strategy? Because as you know, uh, you know, forty B statute's been on the book for nineteen sixty-nine. And yet we've somehow managed to escape it until recently. You know, we had townhouses built years ago and then it kind of, it slowed down. And a lot of that has to do with the groundwater regulations that are special here, you know, and the remaining land being somewhat marginal. Uh, but it's clearly, you know, the dam is creaking and it's starting to break. We're seeing these projects coming through. I've been telling you.
I got, I got a new one this week.
Yeah, I know.
And I got a new, I got a new one this week.
Wait, in Duxbury?
Yes.
The, the new forty B that proposed. And are, are you guys aware of it?
You refer in North Street. It's okay to talk about it. I mean, it's been filed with the state.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, you, you mean this.
It's on Temple Street, I think. It's on Temple Street.
Wasn't that already enforced?
No, Temple, this is a property that was considered for inclusion in the MBTA zoning in the first round. It's west of the highway, south of Temple Street. One little house that's completely condemned and it's all woods.
Okay.
And God, they've managed to get two parcels, twenty-something acres or eighteen something.
Okay.
I think it's proposing like maybe tw- uh, like twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight. So this is going to happen. It's bound to happen. And so I, that's why I put the question on the table. What, if anything, could we do in our zoning bylaws in order to provide another pathway that's not forty B, that's within the town? But addresses, you know, that need.
I think it's really hard because, you know, forty B is in, yeah, until you get to ten percent, forty B is just usually going to be the most appealing option for developers. I don't think you'd be able to persuade the townspeople to create another option that's more appealing because it'd just be, you know. Yeah, it's difficult. Um, you know, I think there's, I mean, I think, I mean, with, with the issue of development, um, sometimes there's a bit of a disconnect because most of the, the I, I think in all, in all of these kind of suburban towns, you know, Pembroke, Hanover, Duxbury, uh, really throughout the Boston region, of course. Definitely, most of the people, you know, wanted to kind of, you know, there's a reason why they moved to those places. They wanted to stay more or less that way because that's why they came here in the first place. They really love the, the green spaces and the low density. But oftentimes the people who kind of worry about the town, the town's finances, um, sort of in, in higher levels, um, are, are sometimes hoping to get a little more commercial development because it's great for the tax base. Um, so it gets. Um, so it gets, it gets complicated. Um. And, um, there are definitely no easy solutions, but, um. You know, I think as far as, as far as the growth management, yeah, I think, you know, a lot of towns, it's probably some of the bigger towns and cities have more. Clear-cut growth strategies that they've defined. I don't really know much about. But to be honest, I haven't really heard about that as a particular strategy. I think more often it's done. In a less formal way through just the zoning bylaws and other kind of the way certain developments are approached and whether they're approved or not and so forth. Um, I mean, I think even the biggest towns and cities, a lot of times things are, things are done on a surprisingly ad hoc basis. You know, people are dealing with emergencies and situations as they arise. Um, and it is difficult to really have a strategy in front of that.
Alright, any other, any other thoughts? I know it's late. Yep, alright. Uh, well, thank you, everyone. We'll go ahead and revise those goals and share. And then, uh, the idea is that we would share them with the select board by going and shouting about them. So we'll try to get on their agenda here in the next month or so. Um, any other, anything else? And, and if, if anybody wants to share before we sign off? Nope. Alright, I'll entertain a motion to. Wrap up the meeting.
No, please.
Please.
Second.
Any discussion? Alright, all those in favor, starting with Matt, what do you roll call vote?
Matthew, begin.
Christian Rappi.
Hey, right.
Lawrence R. I.
Wayne Scott.
Our passion we approve.
Thank you, everyone. I know that was a long one.